Today is September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. All commissioners are present. Commissioner Peach is on Zoom and we will begin with the.
Knights of America.
Alright, we still have a motion to approve the minutes from the three. So move by Commissioner Hagan. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Rusted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Approval of the order of agenda. My motion to approve, or is there any addition? Is there anything that anybody wants? By motion, no motion by Commissioner Hagan. Second, Commissioner Rusted. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side motions carried. Approval of the consent agenda, bills, employee status changes, and overtime. Anybody wish anything called? And. Motion on that.
Mister Chair, I would move approval.
Okay, Commissioner Peach makes the motion. Commissioner Rusted, seconds. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motions carried. Human Resource Director.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ross and Commissioners. I'm here to do two items. One will be an introduction of our new Human Service Zone Director and then one little housekeeping issue. So I'm very excited to say that we have a new Human Service Zone Director. Her name is Tammy Knutson. And I've invited her to come up and explain a little bit about herself.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me here. I'm Tammy Knutson. And I am officially as of August sixteenth, the Director of the Grand Forks County Human Service Zone. I've been an employee with the Grand Forks County since February of nineteen ninety-four. I've held a variety of different positions. While with the county, I began as a case manager, worked as a child protections worker, moved into supervision in child welfare in two thousand and fourteen and currently now have moved into this position. So I'm excited for the opportunity to lead and and be the Director of the agency. I I guess, yeah, I'm not really sure what else you want to hear. Other than it's good to be here today and thank you for having me here.
Any questions from anybody? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
The second item that I have has to do with a slight correction, some housekeeping. When there was a previous motion in June that was done by Mister Pickett when he was the Human Service Zone Director. And he had some incorrect information. It's pretty much clerical, but there was a motion made, so we'll just need another motion. So the original motion had to do with two-year terms for two of two new zone board members when they actually should be three-year terms. There was also an effective date of June twentieth when the effective date should be July first. So what I'm asking for is a motion to correct the previous motion, so appointing Emily O'Brien and Doris Levy to three-year terms to the Human Service Zone Board effective July first of two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, so I have a motion to that. Commissioner Rusted, second, Commissioner Hagan. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motions carried unanimously. Thank you. Correctional Center Administrator, Mister Brookholder.
Commissioner Ross, members of the Commission, I come to you today with two items, the first being the HomeWave agreement under it. I come to you seeking amendment to our current contract that our inmate communications provider, HomeWave, seeking the elimination of the mobile tablets within our current contract. Earlier this year, it was brought to our attention that some inmates had bypassed the security on the mobile tablets. When this breach was reported to HomeWave, they believed that no breach had occurred. They could not find a breach had happened. A review of their logs, network activity, they find nothing. The tablets were removed from the facility and then investigation continued still. Through that investigation, it was determined a breach had occurred. The fact that breach had occurred, to which HomeWave, the provider, could not identify is concerning to myself and others that have been involved. Without sufficient safety measures in place to guarantee this couldn't happen again is what brings me here today. While HomeWave has made necessary changes to address that particular breach that was found, until such time, HomeWave can demonstrate that their security measures have been greatly improved for the mobile tablets and for the safety and security of the facility, the public. I would like them, these tablets, not to be allowed back into the facility as it is in our current contract. So this would require amendment. The kiosk software is completely different, operates on a completely different platform, is hardwired into the system as well as the power systems hardware. So for that, we have no security concerns at this point. State's Attorney, Tammy Womston, has assisted immensely with our communicating with the HomeWave attorney to come up with and drafting a revised contract which would remove these tablets from the Correction Center. And that is what we have before you today. This revision to the contract would remove the tablets within the facility, yet maintain the utilization of the kiosk. Stipulate more stringent monitoring of the activity and security measures and allow us an opt-out provision should they fail once again. Is my recommendation that we accept this modification to the agreement, removing the tablets from the contract. And I'm seeking a motion from you, the board, to do so and have the chair sign the same amendment.
Just got a quick question. So they, I remember talking about the incident on the tablets. Is there, is there any investigation as to anybody being able to bypass the kiosks? That's obviously suffered from the tablets, right? Like they're not, since HomeWave, it's like, hey, you have no idea what you're talking about. Are they, do you think anybody has found a workaround for these kiosks at all, or you haven't?
Commissioner Hagan, members of the Commission, one thing that was found in this whole process, is that the kiosk wasn't being hardwired and so forth. HomeWave can shut them down like this. We can, they can restart them and make sure updates are done immediately. That was one of the flaws that the tablets couldn't do. It'd be like Verizon being able to shut off your cell phone. They can't do that. So if they want to kick some update out to you or something, you'd have to reboot.
What is a kiosk? Can you help me understand?
Oh, I'm sorry. A kiosk, it's a, it's a really computer behind glass touchscreen and so forth that is used for their visitation, their phone calls, their messaging, their ordering of comm sir, everything. It's in a hard case. So.
Coming their access to their account.
Yes. Yeah, it'd be like, like having a monitor right there for you other than for them all encased and sealed. If they have that access to every.
Bob wishes mine was too.
I have a question. There's a comment. The, one of the issues was the kiosks are kind of semi-public. People can walk by and see what people are doing as opposed to inmates sitting in their cells, looking at their tablets, sometimes under their bed covers to access anything they could hack into. So I think this is the right move to take it out until we see something around the country with absolute security and things like so. I agree. And thank, I want to thank Bailey for, she writes up all these contracts and does such a great job. I appreciate it.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
I would, I would be in favor of the motion to move forward with this chair's signature.
Second that. Second by Commissioner Rusted, motion by Commissioner Peach. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same side, motion carried.
The second I might have for you is listed as a stop-loss insurance. Since we have two new commissioners and I know there's been a lot of discussion on budget and so forth, I wanted to bring this to ensure it continues to be the wishes of the commission. Currently, we have a stop-loss insurance policy on our inmates that get hospitalized. This insurance picks up when their medical costs exceed ten thousand dollars. So if they're hospitalized and have a fifteen thousand dollar bill, we, the county, have the first ten thousand interest rates up the next five. We've had this policy probably for about eight to ten years now. And we've been doing it every year. The cost of a policy is projected to be this year about fifty-five thousand dollars. For the, and that's for insurance. We typically have about one claim a year that we get some reimbursement. And that is usually run less than ten thousand dollars. I know how I personally feel about whether we can have this or not, but I don't want to interject my personal feelings in it. I want the wishes of the commission. That will be the direction we go.
So reading between the lines, we're paying under sixty for something that costs ten?
Commissioner Rust, members of the Commission, we're paying under sixty, correct? But for that, we're insuring. Well, we have thirty-five hundred or more bookings every year. Average stay of twenty to forty days. A hospital bill, it doesn't, three days in the hospital and they're, they can easily be over ten thousand dollars. I will interject a personal feeling. My concern is an individual that has the heart attack or something like that that is, we have in custody, let's say they're we're holding them on attempted murder charges. There's no way that the state's attorney's office is going to let me for medical referral and go to the judge and ask for medical referral for that individual. We, the county, will absorb all of their costs. We are responsible for it when they're in our custody. We are responsible. So if, and Fargo had, Fargo had one, probably in the last five years, it was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is my concern. I just wanted to bring, because the contract's up for renewal and with new commissioners, I want to make sure.
Insurance isn't fun to pay for, but it's there in case something like that happens. I mean, one incident, like your heart attack or something, you'd be in the hospital for a couple of weeks. There's more than a million dollars that were, so.
A good example, Pendleton, the individual that was shot.
Say that, yeah, that's the name.
He ended up in the hospital for, and I was trying to guess, and it's purely a guess, about forty-five days. Extensive medical bills. If he had been in our custody and he had that, we would be completely responsible. And for that reason, you have in the package a contract that would sign if it's a wishes of the commission to continue with this insurance.
There was one question that I had, I seen on here that can you explain to me, so the excess loss coverage will be, oh, I've got it. The coverage for mental and nervous disorders, HIV substance abuse, and maternity coverage are excluded. That just got me thinking. So if a female inmate was in there and she was to deliver, like she's pregnant and she has a baby, who are responsible for her? And that doesn't cover the best, correct? And how often does that happen?
Well, we tried to keep it at, I mean, very few times. I would, I would, if I were going to guess, I would say we probably count three to six pregnant females every year. Depends upon where they're at. Will depend upon the care that.
Right.
I don't see how we can't carry insurance. Much as I love that.
No.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
That'd be fun to say, but.
All you, all you to make the motion.
Next week, someone's going to worry that.
I'll move that we continue with the policy as Mister Brookholder stated.
Okay, is there a second? Second, Commissioner Hagan. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Both same side, motion carried unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you. That's all I have.
Chairman Ross and members of the Commission, this is totally kind of an information-only FYI thing. In your packets, listed information about the Safe Spaces program. We took this program to the department heads after discussing it with Mister Ford and Miss Steele. And we presented to the department heads, it's proprietary program, so you have to have special permission from Seattle to actually do it. Well, Grand Forks PD has done that. And so when I reached out to Officer Sampson, who coordinates this program, he was more than happy to let us tag onto it. So Sheriff Snyder didn't have to jump through the books to get a copy. We're looking at this, implementing this just in the Cobb, just due to our location downtown here and are underserved, traditionally underserved in multiple populations. And it was well received by the department heads. And I know that Officer Sampson and Sheriff Snyder also had a conversation. So he, he was affirmative with it as well. So I just wanted to let you know that in the coming weeks, we would like to move forward with this and you'll start seeing the Safe Place logos on the Cobb. The department heads were also invited if they wanted them on their workspaces, getting into main areas, they could, they could also put them there. So just wanted to let you know that we're moving forward. That would be a leave me on the front doors, kind of like it. Yes. It's a front door thing. We're not going to do it over at District Court. We had that conversation. It would be a little problematic for people to go in there randomly. So we're going to do it over here and we will print off some of these flyers for staff and we will announce it to staff in the Cobb that this program is now available. Take anything back that they might have. But the department heads were, were pretty excited to do this.
Okay. Commissioner Hagan has a question.
Yes, sir.
How is the police department publicizing and all these places, the places that might be part of this? It's not just going to be downtown, I'm sure.
Well, I, I know that they have it on their website. The, the explanation of the program, the Safe Place logo, and who to reach out to. So I don't, I know they've done some social media with it, but you're seeing more and more of these stickers around the city offering Safe Places to people, so.
So how, how will the word get out to somebody who needs an emergency, you know, place to go? You know, you've ever heard of something like this. They would, they're not going to notice a sticker if they're being chased by somebody or. Is it going to be some, a social media campaign or something?
We, we will do something on the county's social media accounts and also on the emergency management social media account. And then I'm sure Officer I'm sure Sheriff Snyder will also share that out for us. And then Officer Sampson will likely say something about us joining onto this, onto this.
This is Sheriff.
He's online, yes.
Andy, can you hear me?
Sheriff, can you hear it?
Uh, yes, yes, I, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Logistically, what does this actually do?
Uh, it's, it's a way to notify individuals who are aware of the program and the stickers that the building is a place to go and report a crime. So it's designed more to mark places for people that are victims of hate crimes, to know that it's a safe place. So for instance, if they're involved in a hate crime or a domestic situation where they're not safe reporting it from home or going to the police department, but they get, let's just say they get food stamps from the corridor or, I mean, the county office building. They could tell the, the suspect, hey, I'm going to go to our monthly meeting at the county office building. And while they're there, they could then contact, ask somebody to contact law enforcement. Since it's a county building, the sheriff's office would respond and then we could take the report of that crime.
Thank you, sir.
And which I think is good for Q goes. I mean, just going in to get groceries, it's such a random, not random place, but an easy place. Right, than either. I did have one other question, but the, it describes a little bit about the what you should do when someone comes in. Is there going to be any training, specified training for employees to do when someone comes in? Yes. And you know, the, the nice thing about this is that staff don't really have to do, I guess, do anything wrong. And both Andy and Brian said, you know, we don't want to jump in the middle of an actual domestic or something going on like that. This is simply, everybody has cell phones today, so they may walk into tax and finance area and just want to sit on the bench and call an officer to get, to get a report. If not, they may ask to use the phone. And so that's why staff would come in and let them, you know, just use a phone and quiet office so they can call law enforcement if they come.
Cool. Let's get the word out.
Alright, we'll do it. Thanks, sir. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Andy.
Okay, public health.
Put it to me without a couple.
You want larger?
Well, no, I want it out so I can, so all my graphs will show. Yeah. Commissioner Ross and members of the Commission, I'm Michael Nulitz and the Opiate Response Project Coordinator at Grand Forks Public Health. I'm here today to talk about the spending strategy for the opioid settlement. I will talk about what the strategy looks like. And I think State's Attorney, Mr. Rust, would also have some analysis provided, you know, how she interprets the, the law regarding the opioid settlement where it needs to be allocated. So we go to the next slide. So just to lay the ground on where we're at with our opioid settlement efforts. We're looking right now at opioid overdoses being at a level that we haven't seen in nearly ten years. You know, we're looking at our primary indicator, which is overdoses reaching all through health system. So it's a really positive thing for the community. You know, that means that overdoses are being handled in a manner that isn't, isn't causing significant morbidity and mortality to individuals. They're getting reversed sooner and hopefully not, hopefully happening a lot less in the community. I'm also looking at another indicator we keep an eye out, which is hepatitis C cases in the community. Those are at a five-year low as well. So you know, we are seeing the work that we've, we've invested in the community through our own good grants starting to pay off. You know, the next slide. So in twenty nineteen, the county, late twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, the county entered into a entered into litigation against a number of opioid distributors, manufacturers, and retailers. You know, basically making the case that they contributed to the opioid epidemic through their marketing practices or through their, you know, through their lack of detection that problematic dispensing was occurring. Through that, that process, so between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one, that was involved in the courts. Late twenty twenty-one, the settlements started coming through. And right now, there's been seven settlements that have, you know, kind of reached the point where we actually have numbers for Grand Forks County and there's still three settlements pending. Right now, based off of the estimate that I have, that I put together, it's about six hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for Grand Forks over seventeen years. That number varies widely from year to year. So some, some years you're looking at close to fifty thousand, some years over fifty thousand, and then it kind of trails off towards the latter half, especially for the opioid distributors. Those funds started coming to the county in twenty twenty-one. You know, there was a lot of waiting to understand how we could actually spend the funds and both for the county and for the city. And now we have a lot better idea of how we could spend the funds. We, you know, we're kind of have all our ducks in the roost and now we could start moving forward with the plan. You can go to the next slide. So fitting the plan into the work that's happening in the community right now, you know, we look at the, you know, at the wheel of of response to addiction. So that goes all the way from promotion. So, you know, helping people live healthy lives, prevent substance use from happening, all the way to recovery and aftercare. So how to keep someone from having a return to use. So the work that I've done has been focused on selective prevention all the way over to the aftercare. And then there's a lot of prevention work happening in the community as well. Go to the next slide. So the area that, you know, looking at the county's priorities or, you know, where, you know, where there would be costs getting incurred with the opioid epidemic for the county, the area that immediately comes to mind is the Correctional Center. So the Correctional Center has had, you know, what I would view as kind of an undue burden placed on them, you know, with, with having to provide a lot of care to individuals related to substance use disorder related to the opioid epidemic as well. And we have a definite need at the Correctional Center and that need is to provide or to continue medications for addiction treatment for individuals who have that as part of their existing treatment plan. Some medications for addiction treatment are three FDA-approved medications that are used for the treatment of opioid use disorder. One is called, a medication called naltrexone, one is medication called ypanorfen, and one's a medication called methadone. All three of those options are available in the community. There's barriers to accessing it. And right now, an individual who has a, has a prescription for those medications cannot continue them when they come into the Correctional Center out of concerns of diversion. As well as costs. And there's a lot of regulations depending on the type of medication that they have. That said, there is ways that we can, that we can help address that. And we go to the next slide. And the reason why we'd be looking to address that is because of the legal risk. So over the past few years, the, you know, the number of you know, the number of legal cases related to denying medications for addiction treatment to people in Correctional Centers has been increasing. So the first one started, you know, roughly twenty eighteen. And I've been seeing a lot more of them popping up around the country. So not just as if the right thing to do to make sure that we're providing, you know, an environment where people, you know, don't get derailed from a recovery path. You know, there's also a legal risk, including, you know, potentially even having to pay legal bills for, you know, for plaintiff's lawsuits, for instance. Next slide. So what we'd be looking at for a funding plan would be focusing this, the county's opioid settlement dollars on, you know, on addressing this need in the community. This gives us a predictable funding path. And so then we can, you know, look at what are the, you know, what are the full-time equivalents needed to make this program or bring this program to fruition and know that we have the money to, you know, kind of guarantee that over time. And so what we'd be looking at would be providing a allotment of funds to the Grand Forks County Correctional Center, starting at forty-five thousand, roughly twenty twenty-four, escalating to fifty-three thousand in twenty thirty. And that would give them funds to help, help offset FTE costs. And we'd also be looking at some one-time funding. The first would be one-time funding of twenty-five thousand dollars to pursue a program called three forty B pricing. So three forty B pricing, you know, without going into too much detail, it's a, it's a mechanism for entities that are government-funded to get drugs at significantly reduced rates. So not just the medications for addiction treatment, drugs, which, you know, but that is my primary interest, but also any drugs that the, that the county gives at the Correctional Center. So the state correctional facility does it. They've seen a really nice decrease in the number or in the cost for their, their medications. You know, it's in the hundreds of percent decrease for some medications. So we'd be looking to allocate twenty-five thousand dollars to pursue that three forty B pricing. We'd also be looking. We'd also be looking at twenty five thousand dollars to, um, help support community medical services. Um, so they are an addiction treatment provider, the community, they provide, or they're the only place in the community that provides one of those medications, methadone, um, and. Uh, we've had, um, initial discussions with them potentially being the provider of all these medications at the correctional center. Uh, you know, we wanna make sure that they're, um, you know, they are currently, uh, meeting some helpless statement to the community, so we'll be looking at providing twenty five thousand dollars to them as a one time. You know, offset for their costs to make sure that they're available and we're, but we're ready to move forward. Um, and then, uh, just to refresh your mind, uh, previously, uh, we, uh, the. The county commission approved twelve thousand dollars, which we've been using to offset the cost of M A T medications as well as for search service program. And those funds are about halfway, uh, expected, you know, the next slide. Uh, so bringing this all together, um, you know, I threw out a lot of numbers up there, um. But essentially what this does, this gives us a plan, uh, between, uh, twenty twenty four or twenty, late twenty twenty three through, uh, twenty thirty. And then we can kind of relook at, um, you know, where to spend kind of the tail end of those old good settlement, uh, dollars. On this, uh, does address a need, um, that the county has that's unique to the to the community. Um, and fits within your kind of the overall strategy, uh, that we've been, um, you know, using with our, uh, you know, opioid response program. Uh, just for information, what I plan to bring forward to the city, um, the city's opioid settlement funds, uh, some of the areas where we plan to use those funds would be, uh. Supporting an enhanced prevention framework, um, uh, with the mental health matters program. Um, so helping fund that, uh, full time equivalent, and then hopefully expanding out some of the the prevention work that's going on in the community to that. Um, also helping, uh, support withdrawal management, uh, in the short term and settlement administration. Kind of a policy I think to see, and then looking at the state strategy, um, the state, um, is receiving a considerable amount of money from the opioid settlement. Uh, generally, they, um, have been interested in providing a local component, so hopefully that will cover the, um, existing opioid response work. Um, so we can continue providing some most targeted investments in ways to increase access to addiction treatment in the community. Uh, for instance, so kind of continue what we're already doing right now. Um, so, uh, you know, I'm I'm hoping that we have our our best utilizing all the funds that are specific to the political subdivisions in a way that. Yeah, you know, that they would feel, uh, would be a good representation of what their beliefs have been. Uh, with that, we go to the next slide, and I'm open to any questions on my part. And, um, what I would be asking the the commission for would be, um, the necessary, um, you know, uh, authority for, um. For the funds to be transferred, uh, you know, to Grant Forks Public Health for them to be extended, not based off of the plan. I defer to, um, as long as said, myself, and what the actual motion would be.
Members of the board, I think Mr. Nulitz adequately described the requirements of the law this last legislative session. Um, the legislature passed a bill, um, that provided for, uh, provisions as to how these opioid settlement funds could be utilized. And it specifically provides that, uh, how they're used, um, is collaboration between the board and the public health unit. But that the funds, once a decision is made, the funds should then be transferred to the public health unit for expenditure. So I I think what he had indicated is an accurate reflection of.
And Mr. Chairman, Mr. Duitz, fifty thousand dollars you're requesting at this time, right, for the total balance that's there?
I would be looking for at least the 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 balance that we plan to be expended in twenty twenty three.
So that's fifty thousand dollars?
Six, uh, yeah, fifty thousand, because we already got, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Green, a question. Grant Forks County, of course, signed on with lawsuits. Were there any surrounding counties that did the same thing? And were taking care of their prisoners, are we getting funds from any other county to to put into this pot?
Uh, Commissioner Hagan, those discussions haven't occurred, but most counties would be receiving at least some amount of of funding. Um, you know, that's certainly something that could be looked into, a lot of counties have pretty small amounts, and so they may be wondering, or kind of swiveling their thumbs and wonder. Uh, you know, what's the small amount way to do, and so it it could make sense. You know, that that said, um, you know, a lot of, uh, a lot of the probably need, um, for the M A T program would be. Um, for individuals from Grant Forks County, um, that would, based off of, you know, my knowledge of, uh, you know, where opioid use is predominant at, it would probably be primarily individuals. Either federal inmates or for Grant Forks.
Well, I guess I think there might be. Other counties who are have the same kind of problems, and if there is such a situation, it'd be worth investigating whether their county. Chip in, of course, the chair, I think.
I feel with no technical look at that, too.
Just a couple of questions, um, I think maybe Haley might be able to answer it. The, I know that Purdue Pharma had put in, I don't know legally what they did to like cabinet six billion dollars, so they can never get sued again, but. The Supreme Court stopped that, is there any more information from that latest update, or is that kind of where it's at?
Mr. Hagan, members of the board, um, the county had hired a. Large law firm that represented a number of political subdivisions across the nation to handle these matters. As of right now, I haven't learned that there is any change, however, this is something that's developing day by day, there's new settlements that come out and. Um, you know, I think Mr. Duitz has had done a good job with his, uh, financial estimates, but it's by no means that so. Um, and it 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 may change, I I don't think it'll necessarily go down, but if there are more settlements or or changes in the status of any settlements, it potentially could be higher.
I did have a second question about, um, the community engagement, just I see that you asked some of the assumptions, like addiction being a moral failure, but. How to get the message out to the community about addiction and the awareness about it, because I know there was a. Very popular marketing campaign that staffers came out with, what hammer the user and focus on them, that they're the ones that are wrong, so is there something that. We're doing as a as public health or in the community to?
Uh, Commissioner Hagan, um, our focus on, in the past year on our public awareness campaigns have been too bold, uh. So the first is, uh, you're trying to increase, uh, knowledge about naloxone's availability in the community. Um, and then also, we, uh, we did invest some funds to help, um, community medical services with knowledge of their presence in the community. Uh, right now, uh, we are working with the state on a wider or broader, uh, campaign with community medical services, it's kind of, you know. Kind of a a driver of the campaign, but focusing more on a more. Broader message, uh, that, you know, uh, treatment is a process, not a destination, that's kind of the underlying. Uh, is kind of the underlying message with it, um, so, you know, we have focused a lot on building out outpatient treatment. Uh, infrastructure in the community, that's where we've invested a lot of our dollars, because with, uh, you know, there is, you know, fairly good evidence that. The best place to get treatment is the, you know, the one that's closest to your home and disrupts your life the the least, depending on the need, of course, but. Uh, you know, we wanted to make sure that those are available in the community, and so that is, that is something that we are working on.
Okay, any other questions from anybody? Commissioner Pete, you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but I'd certainly like to make a motion to, uh, transfer the fifty thousand dollars to public health for the twenty twenty three year.
Second by Commissioner Hagan. So we roll call both, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Nurse program.
Chairman Ross, members of the commission, Texmore, the director of public health, um, this is really meant to be an update, uh, to the decision that was made last spring to reimagine the rural county school nurse role. Uh, as a reminder, this decision was multifactorial, consideration given to workforce, consistency and, um, program stabilization. Uh, we were able to take the summer to adapt accordingly, um, funding for this new plan will be supported by the budget worksheet that was submitted as part of the county budget process. Um, and I'll let Kately briefly celebrate, uh, what was accomplished as a result of the allocation of the special funds, as well as provide an overview. On the offering starting this school year, and the school administrators have already been communicated with, um, to be able to, uh, start this process, so with that, I'll turn it over to Kate.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Ross. And I really wanna start with some gratitude and the opportunity to offer the service up to the rural schools, it's been, uh, a wonderful. Opportunity over the duration of the contract with Grant Forks County that supports the nursing services, so just starting off. Um, I'd just like to offer just a quick summary to reflect back, um, what was provided was the two full time nurses onsite at the schools, four districts, however, five facilities. Vanville, Midway, uh, Laramore, sorry, and Emmerito. Um, with that flexibility of that funding, we were able to support, of course, with other public health programming areas. And really support some and and backfill for some of the staffing that was really under pressure in the last two and a half years of pandemic response. As that waned, uh, again, the flexibility allowed to really transition to more of a supportive school nurse setting, uh, where we could offer, of course, the onsite. Support throughout year round, uh, which then, of course, extended to Vanville and their migrant school throughout the summer. As well as some other program areas that were very applicable for their skill set, where we would assist with head starts, screening and follow. Um, and that kickoff and very similar events out at the rural schools. Next slide, please. So just pulling, tracking out some highlights, put some numbers down to it, an overview of the activities completed. We were able to complete a hundred and ninety six, excuse me, speak, ninety six rapid assessments, and that would be direct medical interventions with the students and staff. Amber and Becky were able to create and facilitate curriculum, a hundred and forty three presentations, which really focused over the last year. On a variety of health topics, which include, uh, summer and winter safety, headlights, some of the traditional topics that I've looked at as school nursing puberty. And then, of course, to also offer some immunization support, which the schools have been holding to by their oversight and deliverables of the states. Offered, uh, immunization record reviews, uh, as requested, um, every every district is different of what they're asking, we'll try to meet them where it are and what their needs are. So really tried to serve as advocates for the students in the district to make a positive impact, and I feel that they really accomplished that, and it was appreciated and trusted several times. Some of those, of course, being what we've already mentioned with the COVID mitigation and, um, through contact tracing with schools, reducing exposures. And keeping the kids into where they needed to be, and next slide, please. So they were also, as I highlighted, a strong collaboration with other public health departments, um, that's a couple of exact instances that happened. Our nurse at Emmerito was able to connect our women's way program onsite to connect. Pantry items and packages, how to distribute, reallocate out to the school when we had an overabundance, and so those connections were able to facilitate, try to. Reach people in need even further, as well as, of course, what I already mentioned with the bathing presentations, getting back into the school and offering that direct curriculum. So these services are able to reduce some of the administrative burden at the schools, and also to support the educators through that curriculum that we've got across that, uh, with specific health information. Next slide, please. So looking forward, um, this was more alluded to, I was really looking at reimagining this and facing it off of. Information gathering from the administrators and the principals, what was most beneficial to them, it really felt that that curriculum, um, and calling on public health professionals. For topics that they were seeing as a need was the most beneficial. And so that will be our focus moving forward, continuing to offer health and wellness curriculum as they request, um, to a a certain. Point to find down targeted areas, puberty at the grade, um, also with a second grade health and wellness curriculum, that's some options. Supplying monthly communications, we have a a newsletter that we put together that's extended out quite a ways here further. And we can send it out monthly and offer information that would pop up on a daily basis, and then educate in the career as needed, um, and connect, of course, to public health programs. Next slide, please. This is a, uh, one page offering that we are sending out both to administrators first and then to some champions, if we've. Really interacted with some of the schools and the teachers, um, that have found our services most helpful, and so we'll be sending this out, uh, really as an overview, what we discussed here today. And with that, um, any other questions, I'm certainly open to them.
Mr. Green, yes, there are a couple, uh, how many rural rural schools in the county are not part of your program but have a school branch? I remember, Northwood and Thompson, I think, on their own.
I'm aware, Commissioner, I think, for the question, I think you're spot on in that I'm aware it's Thompson, uh, Northwood, and then those are the public schools, so we focus on public schools. There are some, um, whether it be contractor independent schools that we have not, but are always in support of resources and information from public health. We're open to that possibility as well.
So with Thompson and Northwood, are you participating in programs with them, or are they just on their own?
At this point, uh, they are on their own, uh, there has been some transition in staffing at Northwood, so my plan is to reach out to them and continue to offer resources if they do need. Uh, with Thompson specifically, I'm aware that our immunization program is, we contact to ensure that they have all the resources that they need and. To offer ourselves as help if if need be, and again, I think we're open to it, it's just the four schools, right, as a continuance that we saw. Meeting, uh, inequity, that because they have that full time staff, we're wanting to offer some support from public health and a continuance of the contract list.
From my perspective, certainly from, um, our relationship building standpoint, we want contact and communication with these, um, individuals, particularly. In Northwood and Thompson, uh, to have that open dialogue, should, um, we can share resources or what have you, to be able to support those that are specific in the schools, it just looks a little.
I just wanted to clarify, what does it mean that over two hundred immunization records are?
Sure, so with each, um, when school restarts, there is a requirement within our first three days to have the records reviewed, and then, of course, schools have, uh, a requirement to have. Immunizations based on the Northwood Department of Health, um, with either meeting compliance or. Parents can, there is an alternate route that your parents can opt out to exemption rate, correct, yeah, an exemption as well, correct, yeah. Yeah, absolutely, thank you, that's, it's, it needs to be. So they have that option, but it's to be two hundred immunization reviews, it's just equal to just that of the review of records and making recommendations based off of those.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Pete.
I'd just like to make a comment, I wanna commend public health, this funding came across with COVID nineteen and Chrisa dollars. And that is how we started the nursing programs, obviously, there hadn't been any resources available at the state level. But in starting it with some funding that we were able to get from the federal government, I commend public health to keep, to continue pursuing in this area. Having nurse, um, nurses available in the schools has been a wonderful, wonderful experience, not only for the children, but also for the families. So thank you very much for continuing to work that into your budget so that we can continue to offer that service.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Hey, Josh, North Dakota, Workforce Center Manager. Uh, good afternoon, Chairman Ross and Commissioners, I'm Dustin Hillibrand, the Workforce Center Manager for Josh, North Dakota, for Region Four, our office coverage, Grant Forks. Nelson, Pembina and Walsh Counties. I, there's a sheet coming your way with, uh, some information on it that I put together here, I apologize, it's not quite as polished as our, uh. Litigation scope for put out, but, uh. Hopefully gives you enough information, so our our customers are employers, job seekers, populations with barriers. Uh, public policymakers as yourselves and the unemployed. So our, our customers are employers, job seekers, populations with barriers, public policymakers, as yourselves, and the unemployed. Our office at one time was known as the unemployment office. We are not unemployed, and I cannot stress that enough. If you come in, you can definitely file for unemployment in our office. But if it's a question more than yes or no, we have you talk with our call center out in Bismarck. So we concentrate on workforce services and connect employers and job seekers, offering a variety of programs and education. And we work statewide with partners and the Workforce Development Council at the state level. So I'm going to jump down to the Grand Forks County labor market information. So labor force for July for Grand Forks County was thirty-eight thousand three hundred and nine. Our unemployment rate for July was one point eight percent unemployed. And this is not the folks that are actually on unemployment, that one that we consider unemployed was seven hundred and two. Openings in our system were thirteen hundred, oh, I really messed that up. It's one thousand three hundred and sixty-one. Active resumes in our system are a hundred and eight. And so, of course, active resumes, meaning those are our folks that are on unemployment, need to have, that are not job attached, need to have a resume in our system so that employers can find them. If they don't, their unemployment benefits are stopped until they get that online, so employers can find them. Initial claims, and I'm going to come back to that number in just a second. Initial unemployment claims for the week of August twenty-sixth were eleven. And weekly certifications for unemployment in Grand Forks County were one hundred and three. And statewide, we're only fifteen thirty-three. So as you can see, in our state currently, there are not a lot of folks that are drawing unemployment benefits. Our unemployment rate is very low. In fact, we're, and I'm sure we're one or two in the country right now. But our labor, labor force participation rate for, for North Dakota is seventy point one to seventy point two. And we are the highest in the nation for labor force participation. So let's go back to the, the active resumes. So you can see weekly certifications were a hundred and three. So currently, we have more folks that are, that have active resumes in our system than are filing. But your resume stays active for ninety days in the system. So even though it says a hundred and eight, it's a tabbed misleading because they might have already been back to work. And out of that hundred and three, so if you go to the statewide, one thousand five hundred and thirty-three, about fifty-four percent of those folks are job attached, meaning they're not looking for work. They have employment, and as soon as their employer calls them back, they're going back to work. So you can see, we are meeting a lot of folks here in Grand Forks County to fill the thirteen hundred openings. And quite honestly, when we talk about in our system, there are duplicates that are in our system. And we know that for a fact that there are employers who are not posting their jobs anymore. Or if it's a smaller employer, their system does not get out of that, or their jobs are not automatically exploited into our system. So there are a lot more jobs in the county than what our system actually represents. I'll jump down to the service, our job search programs. Our big program that we have is the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. This provides on-the-job training, classroom training, and work experience for adults using dislocated workers. And dislocated worker, those folks that have been laid off. And their company might not be opening back up, they can't just go back to work. And they also can't just go find a new job. So let's just say, I love using the old basket weaver, the basket weaving company closes up. They can't just go find their basket weaving job in Grand Forks here, so they are considered a dislocated worker. For those folks, we can provide, like it says, job, on-the-job training, where we are actually paying for up to half a salary for six months while they are working. Classroom training, next, get them back in to be trained in something else. Currently, I think we have right around forty folks that we're helping with this. And then work experience could typically use with in-school youth who are looking for some job experience. They might not have those skills, they might not have ever been into the workforce before. They're not sure what it means to work with animals or to work in a music shop. And so it gives them an opportunity to explore those. And we actually, they're employees of ours, and they work with that, that business. Our prior program works with non-custodial parents who are behind on child support. This program alone over the last number of years has brought in millions of dollars to those children whose parents are behind on child support. This is a really great program. Our unemployment, so reemployment services, reemployment services program, RSP, helps those folks that are on unemployment that might be four or five weeks out that they've actually been requesting unemployment benefits, and they can't find a job for whatever reason might be. So we'll work with them and look at their resume. We might look at, do some mock interviews with them, that kind of stuff. And it's, we've had success with that program. H two A housing certification is important to our rural partners, the farmers out there. We actually go out and certify the housing for those H two A workers who are coming over from South, South Africa, the eastern side of Europe, and making sure that they have safe and adequate housing on the farms. We're all veteran service reps in the office, but we have in Grand Forks Fargo, Bismarck, and Minot, we have dedicated veterans employment team that work with veterans who have significant barriers to employment, such as VA rated disability, homelessness, low income, certain age groups, eighteen to twenty-four, and the Vietnam era. We also have folks that were, it might be a spouse, but that's with a hundred percent disability, a disability connected person, and caregivers of veterans who are one hundred percent disabled. And then our job seeker services, if any of you need to come in and work on a resume or want to help with interview skills or looking for work, we have computers that are available for you to come in and use those. We've got a great staff that work out there every once in a while. I'm out there, and then they tell me to go back to my office because they have to take care of it. And so those are our programs. Just a couple of things that we, that we have going on right now. The first Wednesday of the month, which is actually tomorrow, was the first time we were doing it. It's called Workforce Wednesday, and we're going to have a job fair in our office. Currently, we have thirteen employers who are signed up, although I do think one bowed out after I printed this. We're excited about that. We also will do our big fall job fair on the twenty-first. Later this month, I'll be at Larry's Center. We won't stop doing those because those are a lot of fun and we do make other connections. And then on the third Wednesday of the month, we are starting a resource Wednesday. So we are going to have partner agencies come over, and we'll all be located in one location. So if someone comes in and they need to talk to housing, or they need to talk to, trying to think, Spectra, some of those folks, they'll all be in one location. And so, again, first time, we don't know what the turnout is going to be for these two events, but we're hoping that it's going to be great. Couple of other things that we have going on is we are going to be hiring a career navigator, hopefully to start October first. And this person will be working with refugees that are coming to Grand Forks County, actually, our Region Four. Currently, we are slated for about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy refugees over the course of this year. This person will be helping those folks find work on a much more one-on-one basis, where they're going to be have someone to actually talk to. And it might be going to an interview, could be going to doing some interview skills with them. It could be a lot of different things. This is kind of the wild, wild west. We really don't know what's going to happen with these positions at this brand new. I do host a podcast. We've got great guests that are on it, but unfortunately you have to still listen to me. But the courses are, it could be resumes, interview skills. We had great employers from across the state on there. We've had, we talked about how, what, how do you be successful at a job there? And in the summer, we, hopefully, everybody received the emails for the webinars for our youth work experience and international students. And those were put on by a number of state agencies along with job service to talk about filling some of the positions, these openings that I heard earlier. Did I keep my hands? This is important today. So I spoke very fast, but does anybody have any questions?
I have another question about the pride works.
Yes.
Custodial parents behind the child support. Is it specifically just for North Dakota, that like the child lives in North Dakota, but like the non, the person on custodial parents is in a different state?
So, good question. Yes, it is, we work with just those parents who are here in North Dakota. This was kind of a pilot process program. We've had other states reach out to us to copy it, and they've had success. So yes, it is, it works. So to refer to the prior program, it therefore has to come from the courts or from child support itself. And so being North Dakota, it has to come to one of those. That's not saying that if someone does move out of state, that the courts here can't say. Right. Anybody else? All right, thank you very much. How many new historyers?
It's Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, just four quick updates for the board's awareness, and then happy to answer any questions. Last week, State Attorney Womstead, Commissioner Inge, George Schlossberg, Ms. Leana and myself, we had a full call with the Department of Defense Office of Foreign Investment Risk Review. It was really just kind of an update on us providing them an update on, on the commission's amended policy for the winter, winter life form. And then also kind of what's next action steps with Part Eight O Two being finalized. So it was a, it was a pretty good meeting. Got some next steps that, that Part Eight O Two should be published and finalized September twenty-second. So what does that mean? Any potential foreign investment or procurement in, you know, around Grand Forks Air Force Base is now subject to CFIUS? So if, if the county receives an application of that nature, we can request that the company submit to CFIUS review. If that company says no, then we would inform this office, and they would, they being the DOD would start the review from there on out. Hopefully, it would never come to that, but that would be the procedure. So we did also let the office know when the moratorium is up and so that they're aware of that. But all in all, good, good meeting with some good action steps and what we can do next if, if we see another application. Falling up on the space utilization study, I did reach out to Icon. They're gonna, they're putting some, some ideas together. They're gonna, if there's any, going to be any costs, they're going to get those to me so I can bring them back to the commission before any work is started. And that came from the discussion in the last commission meeting. And then Bid PAC Two, moving along to the Youth Assessment Center project. Bid PAC Two, those bids should be before the commission at the next commission meeting on eighteenth or nineteenth. And then Miller Dunwitty, who's the architect for the Dome Rehab Project, they have been here the last two weeks. They've been doing some site visits and taking samples. And hopefully, well, I'll back that up, they do have a good plan for some temporary mitigation. I haven't heard what, what the dome looked like after the storm rolled through last night, but the goal is to get all those areas identified and patched up so that we don't have issues in the spring. But that is moving forward. So just wanted the commission to be aware of those four updates and happy to answer any questions.
Questions, anybody? Okay. Thank you. All right. Stage turning. Committee reports. We'll start with Commissioner Peach.
The airport authority met last week. They're working on a couple runway projects to strengthen the runways. Because the building has been around for a while, we're dealing with some elevator issues, some escalator issues. Other than that, flights are going in and out good. There is some discussion looking at a third carrier. It's just preliminary at this time at airline conferences, but our executive director is moving forward on that. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. You want to stand? Yours, Billy Bridges? Be good tomorrow, I'll show you anything else goes out of that. Get updated. Everything looks good, everything else is bad. Okay. Commissioner Hagan.
The library did finally get a new van, a Chrysler Pacifica, for their community, and open up community outreach. They got it from the new Nelson, which used to be Olympia Chrysler. And we also, Nelson made a feedback on the dollar donation towards the purchase of the van, so that was pretty awesome. Other than that, two events coming up next week before next commission meeting. The mayor's Dr. Badger, next Thursday, and the longest people. So four events for little two.
Commissioner Inge.
Most interesting thing was the major announcement out of Grand Sky, TR, TRNC announcement on Sky Ray. And was well attended by lots of people in the area, seemed to go to all those same meetings. But it's a monster project, it's a tremendous plus for the county.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it is. I was there also, it was very good. That all we got, that's all that happened. Okay. All right, one thing I would like to bring up. We passed a preliminary budget a few weeks ago. And I think we, as the commission, need to get together, preferably next week sometime, to have an administrative services meeting where we can discuss that preliminary budget to see what we need to do, if anything, to lower the burden to the taxpayers. So I'm looking for dates and times for everybody. You thinking early evening, or are you thinking midday, or what do you think? Well, I'm thinking for Commissioner Hagan, I think late afternoon works best for her.
Nothing works best for me right now, my kids are back. No, Mondays and Thursdays are probably the best for me right now, and.
My Thursday is pretty clean, too.
Yeah.
I'm available on a Thursday, that would be fine.
Fourteenth?
Thursday the fourteenth, yeah, like an early afternoon, somewhere between like noon and two.
I'm good from eleven throughout the day, that's the cleanest day I got in the next month and a half. So. We went in at one o'clock in the afternoon, so good. One o'clock, so Commissioner Peach?
Yes, that'll be wonderful.
Okay. So we'll have an administrative services meeting on the fourteenth at one o'clock in the afternoon.
You find exciting topics.
Yeah, that's a must, really. Yeah, it is. Okay. Are we at, we're having so much fun here.
The election contract?
What's that?
I mean, the election contract, right?
Yeah, I'm finished with new business, election contract?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the city is going to have a special election. They have asked me to assist. I have agreed to assist somewhat in a limited basis. I have it in this contract, they'll be doing the absentee's for them. They will be with the R L I K public, so they'll have to be involved in the training now, but that's pretty much it. So I request that you approve the election contract with the chair's signature.
All right, is that, is that the issue on their three-quarter cent sales tax?
Yes, it is. And I left it open because they were considering three different days in November. So they're approving that tonight, but I think it's going to be November fourteenth.
Okay. All right. Second. Second, like Commissioner Rustad, assuming a rule called vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, motions carried.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is a resolution providing for the redemption. So we're going to use fifteen, almost fifteen million dollars of the thirty-two million dollar bond for the jail. So we're going to use fifteen, almost fifteen million dollars of the thirty-two million dollar bond for the jail and invest those dollars and, and pay for the bonds and come to later and use the fifteen million dollars, two percent loan in place, saving almost six million dollars. So I need approval of the resolution providing for redemption with the chair's signature.
I'll make that motion. Okay, Commissioner Rustad.
That motion.
Second by Commissioner Peach, all, assuming a rule called vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same side, motion is carried.
Those are like, with that command, Ms. Nelson, finding this path because that's a huge savings to the town.
Yeah, it's huge.
That we would not have known about, with all your diligence. So we appreciate you for the way you did.
The next item is a donation of twenty dollars to the seventy-seventh annual four-age awards day. I want a motion to donate twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll just pay the twenty.
I'll make the motion.
Second by Commissioner Peach, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side, motion's carried.
They're gonna ask for thirty or forty dollars one year. It's just everything that is involved.
All right, correspondence.
Mister Chairman, members of the commission, there is another round of court facilities improvement grants available that we could apply for. They're due by December thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Call Mister Chair Commissioners, with the, with the current security project that's going on right now. We pulled the enunciations out of the job out because it was so expensive. But, but the, the board had communicated a commitment to the state court facility committee that we would address the enunciation system at a later date. And so Ms. Leon's working with JLG to get maybe some, some, some more fixed pricing on what that could look like. Because the discussion was we either would apply for this grant for enunciation or use capital improvements for the enunciation. When we can, we can look at this, there's, there's always the chance that we won't get this because we got one last, last time, but. What a call. All right.
Mister Chairman, with permission, fifteen B is North Dakota Department of Environment Quality Letter. They were in the deal in Russell County that burned something they weren't supposed to when you were being notified.
Is it the same person wearing tires or something? Doesn't, is it a new person? There was a person that was like wearing tires or something.
No, I don't, it's not the same person.
Okay, so somebody.
I already apologized for that.
It's an accident.
Listen, that's a mission. Oh, yeah. Okay.
And the last item is the, the North Dakota Recorders Information Network refund that we get twice a year.
Okay, thank you, Mister Chair, before we adjourn. So my phone's been blowing up from constituents, et cetera, about what they believe to be coming down the near future in regards to more potential masking, shutting of things down. I know in the century code, it's twenty-seven dash zero seven dash one twenty-four. The state can't do that anymore, but the county still can. It's still kind of city, like force people to mask, force people to go shut their businesses down. I'd kind of like to nip this in the butt before it percolates and just move that no county officials shall shut down business or force mask wearing or however that should be written or worded before people get to a fever pitch because I'm already sensing it. I'd be surprised if you guys haven't got emails or phone calls on this yet as well.
Commissioner Inge.
That's kind of a little dangerous to, to decide this as a board, isn't it? Because if you're talking about COVID, which is what gets everybody all worked up, it's still the fifth leading killer in this country. And we could have outbreaks again. Don't we have to have Public Health come make a presentation before we just decide we're gonna wipe it up? But I don't think that's an appropriate way to look.
Yeah.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
I'll defer to Ms. Womsted, but County Commission does not enact a, a face covering requirement for capacity limits. It's from the Public Health Officer.
Yeah, so yeah, I don't think we can even.
The board, the board would not enact.
Yeah, that's true.
So it's not even a review.
Correct, yes or no?
Yes, sir. You are right. Although I got something to say to them when they call.
Should have asked them when they were here.
I'll turn the phone number to the call.
The County Commission and the mayor each established a health officer for the city and a health officer for the county. And then they allow, statute allows for that appoint to health officer should do so. But the County Commission, the mayor, the city council, they do not enact those.
Well, that's one point. So.
Mister Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Being on the health board, it, it basically is not left upon the health board either. The person who is in charge of making that decision is Dr. Walts. And Dr. Walts is the infectious control doctor at Altru. He's the one who makes the final decision about mask wearing inside, outside businesses, things like that, based on the numbers. And our previous, our previous individual that was just here from Public Health, he's the tracker of the data to see what kind of, what kind of positive rates we're dealing with, with COVID. It's going to be more difficult as we move forward with people telling, going in to be checked for COVID because they're gonna go, ah, I just have a cold, or I just have a sinus infect, you know? And so we're not gonna probably see as, as accurate data as we would like to because some people just won't go in and even bother getting tested.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The next item is Commissioner Hagan. Second, second by. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same side.
Goodbye, everyone. Thank you.
See you soon.